Okay, I'd like to reconvene our meeting and this evening, yeah, this evening, we're going to have the second and third graders from Eagle Lake lead us in our pledge.
How are you?
Okay, I'd like to reconvene our meeting and this evening, yeah, this evening, we're going to have the second and third graders from Eagle Lake lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He was here a couple of meetings and he was ready to take over that bit. Moving on to approving our minutes, we actually have four sets to approve. The first set that we'll approve is our regular board meeting on February Monday, February 28th. Maybe, I think we'll do, then you don't have to do them separately, do we?
No, you can do them.
Just do them all as a group, I like that better, okay. And then the meeting on Monday, March the 7th, and then on the meeting for March the 14th, and then on Monday, our very committee meeting on March 14th. Move to approve, oppose, as presented. Okay, any questions, discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to approve of the agenda, I have no additions or corrections.
I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Support. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to items of business, can you invoice this Kevin?
I move to approve report number 22/03/28 dated March 28, 2022. Approved general fund check numbers 7819 to 7834 dated February 24, 2022 through March 23, 2022 for the aggregate amount of $2,519,616.55. Broken down as follows. Payroll of $1,115,507.20. Benefits of $484,684.69. Payables and prepaid's $919,424.66. For a total of $2,519,616.55. For special revenue food check numbers 3645 to 3657 for the aggregate amount of $144,927.40 for payroll benefits and AP prepaid's. For bookstore fund check numbers 1773 to 1777 for the aggregate amount of $9,525.95 for AP and prepaid's. For student activities fund check numbers 2293 to 2296 for the aggregate amount of $12,666.05 for AP prepaid's. For 2012 bond debt check number 2021 for $298 for AP prepaid's. And for 2016 bond debt check number 1013 for $500 for AP prepaid's.
Is there support? Any questions, discussion of the check register? Hearing none, all in favor paying the bills say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to personnel, Mr. Noel.
This evening, we have the pleasure to meet Gail Enders. Gail, would you stand up please? Let everybody get a chance to see your face. So, Gail is our new business manager in Edward'sburg Public Schools. So, she comes to us most recently from White Cloud. Been there three years, I think, at this point. Well, this is your third year, I think, there. She is from the area, southwest of Michigan originally, Buchanan. She's worked with Barry and Risa, helping Benton Harbor out. She was the Benton Harbor business manager for a while, and then she was with Aucleere. And then I think you were a private accountant for a while too, right? Working for four, five, or 10 years with somebody local in Niles or in Buchanan, so.
About 18 years.
18 years. I'm trying to be nebulous on that. She has two children, a boy, and that lives, well, pardon, but at this point, a young gentleman in Niles and then a young lady in Aucleere that's her daughter, so. Welcome. I know Ann's great and very happy to see you, and I know I am too, so welcome.
You've been wonderful.
If you'd like to say a few things, you can, I mean, we have an hour or so.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity. I see some familiar faces in the audience, people I worked with before, so that'll be fun and interesting, and getting to know you guys will be very nice too. We'll make sure that we continue on the tradition that Ann and your prior business officials have kept going for you, so. Any questions? You know where to find.
So we need a motion to hire Gail Enders as our Director of Finance and Operations. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the family.
Thank you.
Moving on to school of choice, Mr. Noel.
Each year, we choose to opt in or opt out of school of choice. School of choice, of course, is a Michigan law that has been around now, oh gosh, wow, longer than, I think, 15, 20 years. It has been a huge benefit to Edward'sburg Public Schools. At the current time, we have about 22% of our students who are school of choice. We have 2,625 students roughly at this point, so about 580 or so are school of choice. Without those school of choice children, we wouldn't optimize our school district. We, the economy of size, filling up our buildings with those allows us to run at our most efficient. And without those extra children in here, we wouldn't be able to offer the programs we do either, because we wouldn't be at a size that we would be able to offer some of those programs. So it's been a, it's been a real boon to us. So my suggestion would be to continue.
So we need a motion to opt into school of choice, section 105 and 105(c). 105 is for schools, districts within our county, and the 105(c) are for surrounding adjoining
I move to opt in to 105 and 105(c).
Any questions, discussion of that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the approval of the 2022-2023 school year commission, Mr. Noel.
I, once again, take a look at some of the data that you've seen in the recent past. Our district is generally pretty full. COVID has taken a little bit of a bite out of our student enrollment. As a, as a whole, the state has lost a pretty good percentage of students because of COVID. And we're not sure where they all went. In this area, we are pretty sure where they all went, they scooted. When everything was closed down, people had to find work, and a lot of them left the district. The, with that being said, though, we, we are still giving us a pretty big number of school of choice, and I think that our numbers will rebound fairly quickly. With that being said, I believe the tuition for out-of-state people coming in should be at the foundation allowance that we receive from the state. This year was $8,700. Next year, we're not sure yet what that's going to be. The governor has proposed a $434 increase, about 5% increase. I believe it'll be, it's an election year, right? I mean, they're not, they're not gonna, they're gonna fight over who gets to give us the most amount of money. That's always what happens in school districts. So, I, I would suggest that whatever that allowance is for next year, we adopt that again. And then, I would also say some things that we made changes in in the past that we continue. For new students, state foundation allowance is what they should pay. For returning non-employee tuition students, they should have that foundation. Also, for post 1920 employees, before that time, they were paying 10% on the foundation allowance. After that year, they're now paying 20% of that amount. I propose we continue that. And all the employee students enrolled after, excuse me, pre those, say at a 10%, so. The, if we get to a point at some, at some time again where the enrollment is coming down, because I know you have seen the enrollment figures in Michigan are down, and again, this year was, or, sorry, the past year was the first year, I believe, ever that the birth rate was lower than the death rate in Michigan. We may have to revisit this and lower that number, but at this point, I don't, I don't think that's the right thing to do.
So we need a motion to accept the 2022-23 tuition rates as presented by Mr. Noel.
Adopt those rates.
Support, okay. So any further questions or discussion of that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to NAOLA, the following NAOLA policies will be presented for the second reading and adoption. NAOLA bylaws and policies, volume number 36, number one. Policy number 0100, revised definitions. Policy number 0167.3, revised public participation at board meetings. Number 3120, revised employment of professional staff. Number 6114, revised cost principles hyphen spending federal funds. Number 6152, revised student fees, fines, and supplies. Number 7450 is revised property inventory. Number 8310 is revised public records. Number 8320 is revised personnel records. And number 8330, revised student records. So we need a motion to adopt those bylaws and policies.
Sound moved.
Any further questions or discussion of the policies? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to questions or comments from the audience?
I have just one, but I want to make sure I say, and that is, if you did not get the chance to see The Wizard of Oz in the last three or four days, you definitely missed Quiet Show. The, I say this to my wife every year, I don't know how we replace those seniors that are leaving us, and every year, we're able to do that. There, our depth of performers in this group, people that we have, runs all the way down through the seventh and eighth grade year. Just wonderful, and so, and I hope many of you got to see it, because if you didn't, you missed something, it was very, very, very good, so. But when you get a chance to see the Renlands or any of the band people who are part of it, make sure you say thank you, because they did a really great job. And Mrs. Woods, right there.
We do have Mrs. Renland right there.
Oh, yeah, there she is. I was standing behind her last night when she was, when they were giving her gifts, and I was gonna go up and pat her back and say thank you, and, but I didn't want to scare her, because it was coming out of the dark back end of that.
Oh, but the lion would have saved her.
Yeah. Yeah, but, but, at the end, he was out of his, he was out of his ear.
It was a wonderful play, and I'm glad the community really turned out for it too, so I think it's wonderful to have that support from the community, but it was, it was tremendous.
Yeah, we sold out every day, if I remember correctly. That, that hasn't happened in a while, yeah, just short maybe, but that, that's, that's something.
Any other comments, questions? No, no, you wouldn't do Mary, then I was, okay, but you got to tell us, tell us your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Mary Jimeyer from Redfield Grove, Edward'sburg, Michigan. And I was just, a few weeks ago, I received some calls from mouthpiece.
Survey that we did?
Yes, but I never answered the phone. I'm like many, many other people in this community that doesn't answer their phone if they don't know who, who's calling. And so I didn't answer the phone, but then later on down the road, I found out that it had something to do with a survey for the schools, of which I would have loved to have had some input, had I known who was calling. And so, I'm not sure exactly what, how the school, who this represented from the school, but being familiar with, with phone banks, I know that they probably wanted input, and I'm just saying that maybe if, they could have somehow in their, instead of this mouthpiece, if they could have put, identified it with the school in some form, that they might have had more input. And I think that they need input from a lot of different groups in this community.
Well, we can put, we'll make note of that then, thank you. Can I state your name if you will, please?
Stand up for audit. I am Kendra Cezanne from Hasro and Edward'sburg. And this all started a couple, a while ago with just my family, and having some issues with racism in the school. And trying to figure out how to get better support and, and whatnot. And then we had some brave person post it on Facebook, asking if other people have had issues with it. And at this point in time, the Facebook group has had, as of 2:00 PM, this afternoon, there were 48 comments, 14 reactions from 39 different users, all stating that their kids are either hearing or being victims of racist comments and racist acts at the school. And so, really, we're just trying to find out, what can we do? What, what can we do as adults, what can we do as a community? We know a lot of it stems from outside of school, but what, what are some things that we can do to proactively make some changes? I know just griping about it's not going to do anything, giving all the examples isn't going to do anything. I mean, we have, there's some pretty bad examples that we can all share, but that won't get us anywhere. We, we know it's here, we know it's in all of the schools according to the 39 different users who have stated something. What are we, what are we gonna do? How are we going to make a change? How are we gonna make a difference? How are we gonna make my son feel comfortable coming to school? Because he, at this point in time, is not, he doesn't want to come. He feels violated, he feels like a victim, and he doesn't feel like he has support.
Well, I'm going to have you give your name and address and phone number to Cheryl, and then we'll have the superintendent give you a call so you can have one-on-one with him. And we'll start that direction first. Thank you. Don't forget to come up see Cheryl, though. And is there anyone else? Hearing none, we need a motion to go in.
Oh, I, I was just gonna be patient. Can you take up, yeah? Yeah, I'm happy to. My name is Jennifer Saylor. My son is in seventh grade. I live on Christiana Lake, we're new to Edward'sburg. I have two other students who attend Penn School District. I'm, I'm a part of the Facebook group when I first got here, and I think that's, that's nice. And I also think the communication from the school systems on Facebook is fantastic from Edward'sburg. I also want to applaud Jackie Carter, and I've talked to her a little bit in, in the school for taking everything seriously when there's been issues. So I want to say, you know, it's been interesting to see the two districts and to compare, and I want to applaud the efforts that have been done. But I want to join and say, I am very concerned. In comparison, racist slurs and homophobic slurs are daily, daily. When the, when the communication came forward, I was like, I'm kind of glad someone said that, because I'm new, we're new, so I don't know, you know, a lot of the kids grow up together in a smaller school, you know, we're in a different district. But I, like everybody here, that's like the first time I've heard something, I'm just being honest, like this in two decades, just being candid. So for our family, this is a shock. It's like, I, I'm, I was speechless, I didn't know what to believe, maybe overdramatic was my first impression, honestly. It's not. It's hurt my son this year, and I'm concerned. I think that there's just been a lot of things that have happened to the kids through COVID, through socialization. You know, I appreciate Edward'sburg, and I, I want to join in and help. One of the things that I noticed right away, I would like to ask a specific question, there seems to be some hesitancy about the kids reporting anonymously. I, I would say that's, that's not ideal. They should be allowed to report anonymously. Anonymous tips are really good for organizations that can bring in information. You don't have to act on it, but it gives the informa, it gives the information to the school systems, to the teachers, so that they can watch, so that they can catch, so that they can guide, whether that's young, early. So I would propose, because when we first got here, there was a lot about, you know, anonymous, so I would ask and propose that maybe we consider that. And I would also propose that I would be willing to offer, you know, some time, some time to give, you know, some time to learn, maybe with Jackie, maybe with others, to hear about what the school's done in the past, you know, and what they can do. I also would propose a new kid program, when there's a new kid in school, I think it would be good if they hit a peer, you know, like some, some peers that were identified at Edward'sburg who are really good at welcoming others, you know, because at Penn, they had that in the district, and my daughter was one. And so, I think it would be really good for new, because now that Brody isn't necessarily as new, he's seeing others who are new for the first time, and I'm thinking, well, maybe Brody can help him, you know? And so that's what I would, I would say, I'd be more than happy to offer time, and I, I think the school system shows all kinds of promise and communication. It's just, if, if there's any way, any solutions, I'll share that.
Then would you see Cheryl too afterwards?
Yes, I'd be happy.
We'll get that, get that, get you going that direction.
Thank you.
Is there any, none, none others? If not, we need a motion going to close session, and I believe, Becky, do you have that motion to read?
Here my motion, enter into closed session to consider the purchase of real estate property as authorized by section eight, parentheses D, of the open meetings.
Support?
Support.
Do a roll call, Justin?
Yes.
Hadley?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Bella, yes. So we're gonna go into closed session, I'll go to the back office, back there, conference room.
So we will be in closed session for a half hour or maybe an hour. That would be my best guess. If you'd like to, you can stick around till we come back, because we'll have to come back to close the session. I don't know if we, if, that we will take any action at that time, it depends on the conversations we have in closed session. Administrators, you, you can stay or go, it's up to you if you'd like to stay and come back after your, certainly welcome. Ready? Ready?
Yep.